Brian, how the boys like the ocean?
They love the ocean.
Are they up really enough to watch? The sunrise this morning was gorgeous.
Yeah.
They probably saw disease.
She got a great picture of it this morning.
We are live.
I know, Ms. Gravellis. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I now call the regular meeting of the Revere School Committee to order. Please rise to salute the flag.
Pledge of Regents to the flag. The United States of America. And we choose the Republic. We stand one nation. Under God. Indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Roll call the members.
Mr. Spacey Bronson Rizzo.
Yeah.
Mr. Anthony DeBrosio.
Here.
Mr. Michael Ferranti.
Here.
Ms. Susan Gravellis.
Here.
Mr. Fred Sonala.
Here.
Ms. Carol Ty. Mayor Brian Rego.
Here. We will begin tonight's meeting with our public speak portion of the meeting. I will remind folks that speakers are allowed three minutes to present their material. And we will use the raise hand function and Dr. Kelly will help us navigate through that process.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first speaker is Gina Garrow.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. My name is Gina Garrow and I'm president of the Revere Teachers Association. Thanks for letting me have the time to comment tonight. The RTA would like to recognize the school committee, the mayor, the superintendent, and especially Carl Svenson for working with the RTA to continue to take steps to test and improve our ventilation systems in the Garfield, the Beauchmont, and the high school. We also want to acknowledge the decision to give staff the option to work from home every day. The week of Thanksgiving is one that prioritizes the safety of staff. We hope that the mayor and the school committee continue to prioritize safety for students and staff in the face of rising numbers of COVID cases in Revere. We realize that the DESI and the state government are putting enormous pressure on local districts to bring students back into buildings for in-person learning, even as the pandemic rises to the highest numbers of cases since it began. At the same time, DESI and the state government is not providing the funding and support necessary for RPS and other school systems to return to any type of in-person learning safely. I just left a meeting and heard the president of the Wellesley Educators Union speak about how their community, their community's onsite weekly testing and tracing program of staff and students is essential for their ability to be in any type of in-person model of learning at all. Wellesley parents raised the funds for that program, but it should not be that way. Safety for staff and students shouldn't depend upon your zip code. So let's work together to insist that our state leaders fund the safety protocols like surveillance COVID testing in every school so we can return to a form of in-person learning safely when the COVID numbers are far lower in our community, meeting our agreed upon safety metrics. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Megan Lees. I'm going to promote her to a panelist as her Zoom version does not allow. Oh, wait a minute, maybe it does. Megan, can you?
Yes, can you hear me?
Oh, yep, we can.
Hi, thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Megan Lees. I am a science teacher at the Susan B. Anthony Middle School. Thank you so much for giving me some time to speak today. Two weeks ago, Governor Baker instructed school districts to open their doors for in-person learning and to keep them open under most circumstances. The governor stated that remote learning should be reserved only for districts in which there are exceptionally high positivity rates or in which there is evidence of community spread. He said that as a state, we're improving our methods for assessing transmission rates in communities and upgrading school guidance to reflect what the data now makes clear, that learning can happen safely in the classroom. Since then, DESI has released new guidance and cited several studies to support the claim that in-person learning can be safe even in communities in which the virus is surging. Unfortunately, many of these citations were misleading and some of them were directly in opposition to what the studies actually claim. In science, and especially in the midst of a global pandemic, it is imperative that we accurately represent the data which we claim to be citing. I would like to take a moment to touch on a few of the inaccuracies and limitations found in DESI's report. First, I would like to note that the four studies outlined in the report were from August and September before the majority of schools reopened. Secondly, none of these studies were conducted in the United States or by countries that have followed similar guidance surrounding public health policy or school reopening plans. This alone prevents these studies from being reliably generalizable to our situation in the U.S. and here in Massachusetts. The studies were also conducted in schools with greatly reduced class sizes and without mandatory attendance policies and just in elementary schools. We know that younger children are more likely to be asymptomatic, but we also know that they can spread the virus just as much as adults. We cannot reliably say that all schools should remain open at full capacity, citing these studies which are frankly not applicable. So the studies cited are outdated and largely irrelevant, but the report also blatantly misrepresents or excludes some of the conclusions from these studies. Contrary to DESI's report, the study that they cited from Germany acknowledges that the virus did spread in schools and that it's likely that multiple grades within a school were affected by an outbreak. It goes on to warn that younger students are more often asymptomatic and thus less likely to be tested, which can drastically skew the data. Scientific literacy is incredibly important right now because inaccuracies cost lives. When it comes to public health, we cannot afford to misspeak. In the United States, we have already lost 248,000 people to COVID-19. People who work in, live in, and love Revere deserve guidance based on current accurate science. Now more than ever, we must examine all guidance with a critical eye. We must care for each other and keep each other safe. This is how we survive. Thank you.
Thanks, Megan. The next person to speak is Rebecca Wood. I am going to promote Rebecca to a panelist so she can speak to us.
Good evening. I'm Rebecca Wood. I'm a parent of a student in Revere School District. My daughter Charlie's mic on her school-issued Chromebook would go in and out. She wrote what she wanted to say in class on paper and held it up to the screen. The help desk said the Chromebook was broken and needed to be swapped out. However, there were no replacements available. The help desk said that they had been asking parents if their child's Chromebook was working in any way to make do with what they had. That answer was unreasonable to me. Our kids already face enough challenges. At a minimum, they should have access to the resources they need for school. I made a lot of phone calls and discovered that there is no money for replacement Chromebooks. This is unacceptable. You don't just throw your hands up and say, "We're out of money." You figure it out. You find a way. Fortunately, I was eventually able to get Charlie's Chromebook swapped. Shortly after this saga, it was brought to light how much time and money was spent arguing with teachers. The decision of where to spend time and money is a statement of priorities and values. What this says is that administration and leadership values and prioritizes strong-arming teachers over getting kids and teachers what they need. It's immoral and shameful. It's not like teachers are asking for unreasonable concessions. They are simply asking to reduce the risk of death when doing their job. Besides, what are teachers still doing in school buildings at all? With four confirmed cases at Lincoln and one at Garfield, in addition to leaders everywhere begging people to stay home, it doesn't make any sense. It doesn't benefit the students. Teachers should have the option to work from home every day. The days teachers are in school buildings are the most disruptive to my daughter's learning. The internet is inadequate and her teacher often struggles with the connection. Additionally, there are random disruptions like the time a shared phone rang in the room. My daughter's class was disrupted while everyone masked up so someone could answer the phone. Our kids deserve better. Our teachers deserve better, and our community deserves better. Thank you and have a good evening.
Rebecca, do you have an option to move yourself back to the attendee group?
I do not. I just have leave meeting.
Okay. I think I might have to ask you to do that and watch from YouTube.
That's fine. I'll do it.
Thank you. Okay. The next speaker is Shami Goll.
Hello, distinguished members of the school committee. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. The words I'm saying are not mine. I am speaking on behalf of a member who is uncomfortable speaking to you today. Over the course of fall 2020, the increase of COVID-19 cases has increased dramatically in Massachusetts as well as the country. For the Mass Department of Health, as of November 16, 2020, there have been over 184,000 cases, which has resulted in over 10,000 deaths. Many of the cases and subsequent deaths have occurred in Revere. Revere has been hit hard by COVID-19 and it continues to show its tight grasp on the city as a whole. People have been told not to visit families, businesses have closed their doors, and curfews have been set. This is scary because we've already been through this once. In the spring, we saw the horrors of COVID-19 and that was with the majority of people in our community following the guidelines. Unfortunately, people have become lax and frustrated with mandates. However, they are here to keep us and our community safe. So why don't these mandates extend towards teachers and other school staff? Teachers have sacrificed so much. We are working day in and day out, transforming our classrooms to fit the needs of our students online. On top of this huge undertaking, we live under the constant threat of COVID-19. We are scared. In a recent RTA survey of our membership, we received 314 responses, approximately half of the membership. We were asked how we feel about working from the school building, given the rise in cases in Revere and across the state. The response was overwhelming. 92% of total responses said they were concerned for the health and safety of their colleagues and themselves, with 55% of total responses saying they were very concerned. Additionally, we were asked if we should be able to have the professional choice to decide what is best for our families, students, and ourselves. Again, overwhelmingly, the stance was clear with 95% of people responding yes. These are unprecedented times and we appreciate the hard work and time we have all put into securing the safest and best solution for our students. However, at this time, given the learning of students can't occur without the safety of teachers, please consider giving educational staff the professional choice of working from the safety of their homes. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Melissa Randall.
Melissa Randall, La Bresida at 660 Ocean Avenue, Revere. I am speaking tonight as a teacher, a coach, and a mother on behalf of my students, my players, and my daughter, as well as those teachers and parents who want to return to in-person learning. While I applaud the tremendous work and dedication by my colleagues and all Revere Public School teachers, our students and athletes are struggling academically, socially, and emotionally. We are in the eighth month of our students and athletes not being in the classrooms or on the playing fields. While some may agree with the decision to remain remote, I can tell you that it has severely negatively impacted my third-grade students, my basketball players at Revere High School, and my seventh-grade daughter at Susan B. Anthony. I am well aware that Revere continues to be in the red and I am not diminishing the severity of the virus. However, our students and athletes are at a clear disadvantage compared to the cities and towns that have been able to return to their classrooms for in-person learning and to the playing fields. I am a member of the Revere Teachers Association and the Massachusetts Teachers Association, and I realize that they do not support a return to in-person learning of any kind at this time. However, I wholeheartedly disagree with the union's stance that our schools are not safe for students to return to our buildings. I have reported to school every day since September 16th and taught from my empty classroom. At no time have I felt unsafe or that the buildings were safe for me to be in. I can tell you that our maintenance and custodial staff work diligently every day to ensure our classrooms are sanitized, safe, and prepared for our students to return for in-person learning. Governor Baker, Commissioner Riley, and medical professionals have said that our students should and can be in school. So I ask Mayor Rego, Dr. Kelly, and members of the school committee, please consider relaxing the guidelines and allowing our students to return to school with the safe hybrid model sometime in the near future. Thank you.
Dr. Kelly, is there any other participant who has their hand raised at this time?
No, Mr. Mayor, that was the last one.
All right, we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. And we'll begin the superintendent's report tonight, actually with a report from the Hill School, sorry. And I'm going to bring up some folks to talk with us. This'll just take me a minute. And I'll ask Principal Lomas to look around and see if I got everybody.
Got everybody. Thank you.
All right, great. So tonight, the Hill School is going to present with us and I'm going to share my screen with their presentation. Let me just find the right one. And it's telling me I have too many open screens. Be with me for just a second. And Melissa, I'll toss it over to you to introduce your team and get us started.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Good evening, Dr. Kelly, Mayor Rego, and members of the school committee. I'm super excited for our third-grade team to share with you this evening the work that they've been doing so far this year with remote learning. This team has approached remote learning through the lenses of social and emotional development, academic growth, and school engagement. They've worked tirelessly to design instruction that is not only informative, but it is also interactive and engaging for their students. So it is with great pleasure that I turn the stage over now to members of our third-grade team, Jillip Alito, Melody Holmes, Penny Caliavas, Andrea Seminelli, and Colleen Roach.
Thank you, Ms. Lomas. First of all, I would just like to start with, as a team, we are focused on providing our students with similar experiences to those that they would have if they were in the classroom. This presentation will give you a window into our approach to student engagement with teachers and peers.
You guys could just signal me when you want me to switch slides.
All right, go to the next slide, please.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm going to talk about some of the math lessons we do, synchronous and asynchronous. A lot of the ways that we engage our students are by using programs like Pairdeck. Pairdeck is an incredible program. We often use it with Google Slides. It helps us to increase student engagement, informally evaluate students, and to make learning fun. And I just included a little snippet so you could see some of the choices we have to let the students engage. We can give them multiple choice questions on the spot, let them draw, drag and drop. So we're trying to make it as realistic as it would be if it was in the classroom. You can go to the next slide. Pairdeck helps us interact with students while we're teaching. This is an example of a synchronous multiplication lesson. So what you're looking at here is a teacher view. So you can see the question. And if you go to the next slide, you'll see what the students will see. So here is the student view. As you can see, this is a drawing page. There's lots of different colors at the bottom. They have different tools such as highlighters, drawing a line, a text feature. I included a little video. If you click here, you can actually watch as a student would see where it says click here. If you can't, it's okay.
I think it will work. Let's try it.
There's no sound on this video. If it doesn't work, it's okay.
Let's see.
I couldn't figure out another way to embed it in the slideshow. All the link was, it was actually showing you what a student would.
Was it not showing just now? It was showing on my computer.
I didn't see it.
Okay.
Sorry.
Let me see.
It's okay if you can.
Okay, all right, sorry.
All I wanted, I just, I wanted you to be able to see just how the kids, it's very easy. That's all I wanted to show you, that you can see their drawing. You can go to the next slide.
Okay, let me just go back here. I think I have to.
There you go. So this just shows how we can quickly assess student answers, just the same as if I were walking up and down, you know, through the desks of students. So here's a question, how many are in each group? So those bars you see below, those are the student answers. And I can see as they're answering in live time, I can see which students are answering. So these answers show me right away that 19 students answered it correctly. And I can see which ones answered it incorrectly and they can't see that. So it's really a great way to just assess them on the spot. You can go to the next slide. Here's another way that I assess. This is another view from a teacher. This is something I would use when I am grading work that I have assigned for asynchronous work time. I can leave comments here. I can start answers if I want to go back to them. So it is another great way to assess. I can also do this, I can go back and look at a live lesson as well. You can go to the next slide. We don't just use all computer programs. We do a lot of hands-on activities as well. At the beginning of the year, our team put together some whiteboards and we put them in some bags for the students. We sent home some dry erase markers as well. And the students love drawing on whiteboards. So it's a nice change of pace. In addition to whiteboards, we also use their workbooks, their math workbooks as well, that we also sent home. So the kids, believe it or not, they get excited now to pick up a pencil and write on some paper. And you can go to the next slide. And the last part that I want to talk about for math is just how we assign assignments in Google Classroom. So Engage New York is another resource we'd love to use for math. And since we can't give worksheets out anymore, we are able to put them into a Google Slide. And the kids are still able to do everything that they would do had they been in school. So instead of drawing, we're cloning, you know, pictures so that they can actually make arrays. And that's it. You can go to the next slide.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm going to talk a bit about our reading instruction. We're focusing really hard on how can we make learning more engaging for students when it does need to be a teacher-directed lesson? Third graders are not naturally equipped to sit and listen to a PowerPoint presentation for a 30-minute small group lesson. So what can we do to make it a much more robust experience for them? So we can embed student-friendly videos. Pairdeck allows us to put the video right in the PowerPoint and the kids can actually control the video themselves, which is awesome because they're not dependent on my internet bandwidth. They can pause and rewind and have full functionality with the videos independently. We try to make our presentations colorful and kid-friendly and just really eye-catching for them, which really does make a difference. Next slide, please. We don't want to sacrifice any reading skills just because we don't have students in front of us. So we check in with the kids every two or three slides, sometimes every slide with Pairdeck. Kids can type right on the screen when prompted and we can see live as they're typing and editing their responses and provide feedback and tell them, you know, you need a capital letter or just little check-ins like that, the same way we would have done in a classroom looking over their shoulder. Next slide, please. So we don't want to lose their ability or miss out on the opportunity to grow their ability as readers in the sense of reading comprehension and annotating texts. So believe it or not, in third grade, we really start to dig deep into close-reading texts. Kids are asked to highlight their evidence to prove why their answers are correct when they're reading. We don't just rely on multiple choice to see if they understand a text. My mom always used to call that multiple guess and we don't really want to just make random guesses. So we ask students to go back and highlight or underline to prove their thinking existed in the text to begin with. We used to do that very easily on worksheets and through not only Pairdeck, but also programs like Newzella and Achieve 3000 and Raz Kids. We have all sorts of digital tools to allow them to develop these skills, which they'll be using their entire lives as learners. Next slide, please. It's also important that they're still developing fluent reading skills. So we've always heard, past 10 years or so in education, that we shouldn't be calling on kids to popcorn read where you just, you know, have a shared text and you go around the circle and just call a kid to read in order, that that really raises their stress level and doesn't produce the best reading. So while we're able to share our screens, as you are doing, and ask them to read off of a screen, we've been looking for ways to hear what their natural reading ability is when they're not, you know, put on the spot on Zoom. So we have found programs like Raz Kids and also a really cool video recording program called Flipgrid, which allows them to record themselves reading during their asynchronous blocks. And during our asynchronous time or our prep time, we can go back, listen to these recordings, provide feedback, take notes, and really hear how their reading is developing. We try to provide high-interest texts for them to keep them engaged, making them want to come back and do the assignments. Let's see, next slide, please. This next slide is Lucas. I hope the video works. He's kind of the reason, he is the reason we're all here, teaching. He's a great kid. And he provides insight that reminds all of us that it takes more than just picking out some cool nifty websites to keep these kids coming to school every day and motivated to learn. So if we're able to hear his video, I'd love you to hear in his own words about his experience.
And I thought of this after Jill finished, but I think what I have to do is stop sharing and open the video and then share again and we should be able to hear Lucas. So let me try to do that. Hold on. Let's see. Why is it not showing me? They are with me. They are with me.
Hey, Trevor Ria. I'm in third grade. I go to the Hill School. And my teacher is Miss Holmes. And I'm here to tell you a few, how remote learning is going for me.
What do you?
I like that I can sleep a little bit longer. I don't have to wear my uniform. I like Fun Fridays.
Oh, you don't have Fridays?
Miss Holmes like puts cahoots and we do like a bunch of fun things.
What do you miss?
I miss that I can't talk to my friends in person. I can't have recess. We can't go into the playground. And I can't talk to my teachers in person. So I'm looking forward to go back to school. Bye.
What a cutie. Okay. Thank you. Next slide, please. All right.
So we thought it was important to discuss what inclusive, an inclusion classroom looks like in a remote learning setting. And we provided the definition of what an inclusive classroom is for those of you who don't know. But the main idea of it is that students need to be able to collaborate with each other and learn from each other. So that was a challenge that my co-teacher and I have been facing and trying to solve.
The solution is to use technology to provide students with meaningful opportunities to collaborate. This has helped develop not only their academic skills, but also their social skills, which do not occur as naturally in a remote learning setting. You can go to the next slide, please. Thank you. So co-teaching looks different in a remote setting, but we use cooperative learning to mimic the student collaboration that would occur in an inclusive classroom. So we begin with co-planning. Oftentimes, we'll front-load the concept that we're about to work on to the cohort of students on IEPs. So this ensures that when it does come time for group work, all students participate. Another part of the co-planning is identifying the bullseye together. So oftentimes, we'll discuss what students should be able to do at the end of the lesson to ensure that we're both observing the same thing. We'll also identify look-for's or things that students may be doing that would help them attain mastery. And again, identifying these two things are important since we are not in the room together. So we want to make sure that we're observing the same things.
So like Miss, so like Andrea said, co-teaching from separate places is also a challenge, but identifying those observations or things to look for has helped us to really be able to co-teach meaningfully. And that way, when we reflect on each lesson, we're able to talk about the same things that we're noticing, take notes. We can keep anecdotal notes as we're observing the cooperative learning groups and think about which students are making the progress we want to see academically. Also, for social-emotional learning, which students worked well together and perhaps which ones didn't, and being mindful of those groups. Next slide, please. Sorry. So co-teaching, part of putting the students in cooperative learning groups. Some things that helped it work well was clear expectations, obviously. So the group work expectations are laid out for all of the students. Every time we do a cooperative learning lesson, they go through it, they read it, and now they know what they are expected to do. Using Google Classroom to make the assignments easily accessible for all of the students. So the transition time has become minimal. They get into their groups, they log on to their small group, Google Meet, and they're ready to work and get the meat of the lesson done. And then that little teeny tiny picture with the little circles shows students who is actually working on the document in live time, which is really helpful. It helps them keep each other or hold each other accountable. Next slide, please.
So these are samples of student work slides. The bullseye for this lesson in particular was to use pictures to show your understanding of the commutative property of multiplication. And as I mentioned, I pre-taught this concept to the students on IEPs. And so then in this lesson, they were the captains of their groups, which was really a great, it was a valuable opportunity for them. Groups work together on their slides to complete the task. And as I was observing the groups, it was evident that students thrived in a learning environment that was collaborative. They were supporting one another, and I observed even students sharing their screens to help one another. It was just very clear how much learning was happening from their peers. One of the groups that I was observing finished their task early. So in real time, I was able to add a challenge slide for that group. So Google Slides is a great way to assess student understanding. And then, as I did, you can provide an enrichment activity just by adding another slide if needed. And you can go to the next slide. Thank you.
Then after the lesson, Andrea and I always try to do a co-assessing this, for this lesson that she just showed you. We created a Jamboard, which is a Google program, I guess. But it basically allows the kids to go in or the students to go in and answer the question using a sticky note to tell what they've learned in the lesson. So we came back as a whole group. You can see the question prompt. And we circled a couple of our favorite responses. One thing I learned is I helped my friends on how to switch the number and get the right answer. One thing I learned is it's the other side around, like two times four equals eight and four times two equals eight. But we use this information to acknowledge the students that were specific in their understanding of commutative property. And then going back with the students that weren't really clear in their response are the students we really want to focus on to make sure that they understand the standard. Next slide, please.
After the lesson, we asked students to create a Flipgrid video about what they liked best working together in groups. So this is Riker, and Riker is going to share what he liked about cooperative learning.
Okay. You guys are challenging my skills tonight.
The last video.
No, it's not. There's one more. Okay. Oh, wait a minute. I think I forgot to click the volume on that one. Hold on. Oh, no, that's good. Okay. Let's see here. I don't know why it's not letting me share. Okay.
Something I liked about working in math with other people is that I gotta do some stuff with my friends in math, and I gotta learn more from some of the people that were in my group. So I really, really liked it. I hope we do it again soon. And I also liked the, the like, the work that we were doing during it. It was really, really cool. So I hope we do it again.
There's a video immediately after, so if you want to just.
Oh, okay, you want, um.
Yeah, it's another student.
Let me see if I can do this. Do you want to intro?
I like remote learning because I get assigned work that sometimes I have to make videos of me reading or type in certain boxes or take a picture of my work and send it. If I were in school, I'd be doing all this work on paper. Okay, that's it. Bye.
Awesome.
All right. And then the final portion of our presentation is parent engagement. It's hard to have full student engagement without the support of the parents. So one way we communicate with parents is we're constantly on dojo messaging them. But our biggest thing right now is we do bi-weekly progress reports. If you wouldn't mind clicking on the pink link in the middle. Hopefully it works.
Did that work? Are you able to see the new screen? No, okay. So let me do a quick stop-share.
It's the only time you'll have to change the rest.
All right, let's see here. Does that look right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So this is our bi-weekly progress report. This is how we inform parents about attendance, what, if they're active in their live meetings, if they're participating, if they're missing any assignments. We tell them what standards and skills they've been working on the last two weeks. We judge their behavior, and then if there's any comments that we'd like to add in, just to let the parents know anything else. As a parent, I find this super helpful because if I'm on live video, I can't always be with my son, checking on him. So it's good to get it as a parent, so I can imagine the other parents who don't work in the school appreciating it as well. But this concludes our presentation, and we wanted to thank all of you for having.
Sorry about that, Colleen. I was trying to make it larger, but I was in the wrong field.
No worries.
Well, you all did a fabulous job, and, you know, hopefully this is going to help the committee understand a little bit better about what the day-to-day is, both for teachers and for kids. I'm sure they have a couple of questions.
Do any members have any questions? Ms. Rizzo?
No, I just, I love it. I love the Jamboard. I love the Flipgrid. I'm sorry. I love how it allows the teachers to deliver really engaging learning moments to every student every day. And just one small question, is this only, can be used in Google Slides? Or can you use it just Google melody? Okay.
So the Pairdeck was the question-and-answer types that we were showing a lot of at the beginning. That is called an add-on for Google Slides. So it is really compatible with all of the district's Gmail accounts. Any slide presentation that a teacher makes, they can, you know, add these kind of interactive features to any pre-existing work that they've done in the past, which has been really helpful to even convert some of our old PowerPoints into the Google Slide format and then add in these new features. So it takes a little bit of time, but the reward in real time, being able to almost look over the kids' shoulders, is, is absolutely worth it.
No, it's wonderful. Thank you all. I really appreciate the lesson and then also seeing the students. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. I'm going to see if I can figure out how to move you all out. Okay. Okay. Oh, Andrea, I missed you. Sorry.
That's okay.
Diane? Diane?
Yes, Michael.
Just a quick information. Susan had to leave because her mom fell down, and she went over to the house to see if she could help them out. So that's why she's not at the meeting right now.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you. The, the next item on the superintendent's report is a presentation from the Paul Revere School. And again, we have some, Principal Donna Bonerigo is here with some of the teachers and students from the Paul Revere. So I'm going to bring them on. And I'll also make note that Ryan has joined us. He had been in the way, in the attendee, and I forgot to look for a few minutes. But now he's here with us. So Donna, the one person I don't see is Liz. Is she still planning to join, do you know?
She is.
Oh, she's right here. Zero Miss Adamo. She's tricking me. Okay. Not Adamo. So the Paul Revere School is now going to give us a presentation. They're going to talk about a writing program that they've been working with. And I'll let Donna say more and introduce her team. And two of their students, Jacob and Leona, are with us tonight. So I'll give it to you, Donna.
Okay, great. Thank you, Dr. Kelly. And thank you, school committee, for inviting us tonight to come and talk with you about our new writing program. I talked a little bit about this last spring when I presented the new innovation plan for Paul Revere School to the school committee. So we are in the first year of our five-year innovation plan. And it hasn't started the way we anticipated last year when we were writing most of this plan. So we're implementing just part of the literacy programs we had wanted to put in place this year. And being a writer is the one that we're focusing on. And as our talented colleagues from Hill School in their terrific presentation they just showed you have noted, a student engagement and making learning relevant for students in this remote environment is one of the challenges we think about all the time. And we have found that this being a writer program has really done a fantastic job of engaging students, of giving them a lot of voice and choice so that they are able to express themselves using their writing notebooks. So at this point, I want to hand the presentation over to the real experts, which are the teachers and the students. Liz Adamo and Caitlin Lux are co-teachers in fourth grade. Liz is the regular education teacher, and Caitlin is special education teacher. They're going to talk about what the program looks like in their classrooms. But I do want to note that the program is being used K through five at Paul Revere School. Next slide.
Do you want to go over this part, or do you want me to?
You could jump in, Liz, and just talk about the implementation.
So we were able to receive all our materials before school started this year and, or in September. And we had some training on the program, which helped us get a jumpstart on it. And with the training, it was helpful as we were able to see, they kind of talked us through some ideas for doing it virtually and some pieces we might want to, some lessons we could omit this year with the students being virtual. And kind of our thing this year has been working on how to do this virtually with the students, as there are a lot of pieces with it. We have a great amount of resources. We have a lot of books that come with the program. Students have two different workbooks. One of them is more of a grammar workbook, and the other one has different passages in it that we use time to time. And then each student was given a spiral notebook this year to do their writing in. We can go to the next slide.
We can go to the next slide. So a piece of this program, how it works, going through the steps is. We work on getting ideas for writing and we're going to talk about some of that next with the stories. And the different, we have lessons every day on this and some of them are quick lessons and some of them do take a little bit longer. And we work with students on some pre-writing strategies. After we've read a story, we have them work on some ideas. They have the back section of their notebook is marked and it has ideas for. This one here, you see the example, student has ideas for magic objects. They have ideas of personal events. They had other, something else magical. I forget which other one it was, but there's different things and that's their bank to choose from as they go and they do their right, their writing. And then some days we have quick writes. So it'll just be five minutes where going from a lesson that we just had. We'll say, okay, now we want you to write about a quick thing. Tied along to the story that we just wrote, but it's their own personal writing piece. And you can see the example of the one the student had there. And then as the students go through, the front of their notebook is where they keep their writings. And in their writings, they might decide during their writing time, which ranges from. Earlier this year, we started at 15 minutes and now they can go up to a half an hour of just writing time. Where they can continue on one of their quick writes or they might have a story that they wanted to work on or they might choose another one. Then after a couple of weeks of one unit, we work on selecting a piece to write as a final draft. And this process here, the students, this is the first time that we get to truly see their writing because. All before this, it's been in their notebooks and while they'll read bits and pieces of things throughout the. The writing process, when they finally put it into a Google Doc, that's when we're able to see it. And then we work as a class in looking at their writing and revising it. We talk about different ways to add transition words, add descriptive writing. And then we did last time with the students, we had them doing some good partner revising and editing. Where the students would, we'd have them in breakout rooms and. The student would read the other students writing out loud. And then if they got to a point where they didn't understand. Something or they had a question or they thought they could add more details, they would comment, they would make a comment to the student. And in Google Docs, you can put comments in there. And then they would help the student have time to go back and add more details to their story and really. Spruce it up to for their final draft. So we're still working on those pieces and working together with that. But they did a great job the first round and now we're on our second round of publishing work. So it's been great. I can't wait for you guys to hear a couple of the stories. Next slide. So the being a writer program incorporates several model texts. These texts are a combination of picture books, excerpts from longer passages in nonfiction texts. At the bottom of this slide is a selection of texts that we as a fourth grade have read this year. Some of them we have not read in full detail, such as Child Times and Everything Reptile, where we only looked at selections of the stories. But students will still get the majority of the text. Students are exposed to a variety of different topics through the model texts. This program also provides a mini lessons on revising their own writing and grammar skills. Students received a workbook as Liz talked about previously. Dedicated to the explicit instruction and practice of grammar skills at the beginning of the school year when we passed out materials. A large component of the writing program focuses on conferencing, both with their peers and with teachers. Students are able to share their writing and feedback on each other's writings, offering ideas and potential ways to revise their writing. And we've asked several, a couple of students here to share, come and share their writing with you tonight. So. If we can have Jacob, can you share your writing with us?
Um, yeah. My trip to Niagara Falls. Once I'm right, one summer vacation, my family and I went on a road trip to Niagara Falls. It was. My mom, my nanny, my nana and I in the car. It took us eight hours to get to to the hotel. I played games on my iPad and had lots of snacks during the car ride. The name of the hotel was the Marriott Hotel. The first thing I noticed when we got to the hotel was all of the shiny tiles. In the lobby. We got our room key and went to find our room on the top floor. We found our room on the sixth floor. And saw it. And saw that there were. Bump beds. We went swimming after dinner. Next to the swimming pool was a baby shark tank. When, oh no, we took the bus over to the waterfalls. I could see the mist coming off of the water. The water changed different colors at. At night by lights. Some of the colors I remember are blue, red, purple. And white. We were there for July 4th. And got to see fireworks. They were the best fireworks ever and the biggest. We took a boat to get closer to the falls. Called the Maid of the Mist. The boat. For the US side was blue and the boat for the Canadian side was red. We all had to wear ponchos so our clothes didn't get wet. We saw a zip line on the Canadian side of the falls. We got so close, we. To the falls that we all got wet. It was so much fun. My favorite part of the hotel was the arcade they had. I like playing games at the arcade. One, one of the games was Crossy Road. It was a two-player game. Next to the arcade was a gift shop. I got a Niagara Falls cup and we found one with my name on it. I saw, oh, I still use my cup today. I think my trip to Niagara Falls is my favorite family trip so far. I would like to go there again. If I went again, I would like to stay at the same hotel. If we stayed at the same hotel, I would swim. In the pool and play at the arcade. I would like to. Do the boat ride again, but I would never. Try the zip line, but I would love to get a bigger cup with my name on it.
Thanks, Jacob. Thank you. Leona, can you share your writing with us, please?
You want me to turn on my video?
Yes, please.
So what I'm going to read you is part of a prologue that I typed. Prologue, the four brave sorcerers and the great Sphinx. Ten years ago, there were four young and brave sorcerers and they had come to journey to the great Sphinx. The Sphinx was pure evil and would instantly wound anyone who got an answer to a riddle wrong. But the Sphinx was never like this before. It used to let anyone pass if they got a question wrong or right. Then an ugly wicked troll, jealous of the Sphinx's kindness and generosity, decided to curse it. Now, the four sorcerers have finally reached the entrance of the Sphinx's cave of treasures. As three of them were wise and knew well, the fourth sorcerer was foolish and thought she was a very impressive and powerful genius. This always led her into all kinds of great trouble in different situations. All the sorcerers were now discussing what to say to the Sphinx. I think we should try to outsmart the Sphinx so we can grab the necklaces of the great spears and take over the world, said the fourth sorcerer. The other sorcerers looked revolted. No, we can't do that, hissed the first sorcerer. We have to make sure that we act kind and generous to it. The fourth sorcerer rolled her eyes. Whatever, she said. She did this so loud that the others had to make her be quiet. Shush. If you want the necklaces so bad, then we have to be quiet and think of a plan, the other sorcerer said. Plus, we all have to gesture ourselves for what comes next if we get the question to a riddle wrong, the second sorcerer said. Then she came up with an idea. She said, maybe one of us should make up a fake legend about the Sphinx. And that person should approach it carefully and say that she had already done the first parts, but needs the Sphinx to finish up the legend. The fourth sorcerer rolled her eyes again. Um, why do we need to make up a silly fake legend to fool it? She asked. The second sorcerer threw her a look of utmost revulsion. So that we can get the necklaces faster, but you interrupted me. Whatever. I still think that my idea is the best, said the fourth sorcerer. Then the first sorcerer came up with another idea. I have another one. What if three of us pretend to be dead and one person hides somewhere? And when the Sphinx sees the dead people, the person runs inside the cave and grabs the necklaces. Both the other sorcerers gave her a thumbs up. But this third sorcerer said, no, stop it of you, all of you. You're all being silly, just trying to trick the Sphinx and get the necklaces. Let's just all go. The fourth sorcerer rolled her eyes for the third time. Do you have a plan if you think ours are silly? He asked. The third sorcerer shot her a dirty look. I have a plan, she mumbled.
Thank you, Leona. You did a great job. Leona, I have to tell you that the mayor is going to be reading to some first graders next week and I think he should take some reading lessons from you. You did a great job. I think we lost Jacob, though. He might have. I think he signed off right when he was finished. So as you can see, the stories, while we're exposing them to multiple types of. Text, we have fantasy, different biographies, nonfiction, we're exposing them to all different types of genres. And then when they get to write, it's what they want to write. So we can see they write about fantasy, make believe. And their own personal narratives. So it's great because it's, and students are really loving this program because they have the freedom to write what they want. So it's been really great. We've been seeing them be really creative and some of them are taking. The pieces that we're doing and they're really building on that. And some of them are just taking and kind of going in their own direction, which is really nice to see. And with the special education students, I have noticed that their writing is getting longer and more detailed. They are able to add more details to their writing and it's always such a great thing to see. Well, thank you all very much. That was fabulous.
It was fabulous, Dr. Kelly, and thank you all. And thank you, Leona. Hopefully I can get some lessons before my, my big. Pre-Thanksgiving reading to the first graders. I need to bring your energy. I need to bring some Leona energy to next week's reading. Mrs. Rizzo, you have a question? Any other members? Okay, Mrs. Rizzo, we'll start with you.
It's mostly a comment. I mean, first of all, you gotta love that Paul Revere PTO fundraising. They really do great things over there. I love how this program is so flexible in its writing curriculum and how it allows independent practice also. But not as much as how much I really loved and enjoyed Jacob and Leona's story. So thank you for taking this ordinary, regular night and making it truly special. I appreciate it. Thank you, Leona and Jacob.
Thank you, Mrs. Rizzo. Mr. Franti?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank, you know, both the teachers, Liz and Caitlin, for the job they're doing. The kids were absolutely fantastic. They're really doing a great job. And it's just basically a quick question. And I know it's, you know, early in the year. But how do you think overall that the program is working, what you guys are doing?
I think it's been really good. We've been seeing the students excited to write. And they really look forward to those times and and they're also learning how to work with one another, which has been really good. You know, a big piece of this program is partner, partner work, which is, has been more difficult for us to do this year. So. I definitely think once we're back in school, we'll be able to even add more to this program, but. But they love hearing one another's after they write. Every time they come back, they're like, can we share today? Can we share today? And they love hearing what one another has to say and giving feedback. So I think it's been really good. And then also, as they transferred over to other writing pieces in class, learning how to add in more details and. The transition words and to really build on their writing. I think we're going to see it kind of. Spiral down to all the other types of writing that we do in class.
Great. Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Ms. Franti. Any other members? Thank you, Team Paul Revere. Wonderful job.
Thank you very much.
I just want to say, I hope Ms. Ty was able to at least see it on YouTube, seeing that she was having some difficulty. Because this is one thing she would truly, truly love.
Yep. There's a Carol in the waiting in the attendees list with no last name. That I'm going to move to panelists and see if that might be Ms. Ty. And then Liz and Donna and Leona, I'm going to move you back to. Observers or attendees or you're welcome to head on to Other Adventures for the Night if you want.
Thank you. Thanks so much for having us.
Thank you, guys.
Dr. Kelly?
Oh, that is you, Carol. How are you?
Yes, it is. I have to say, Stacy, thank you. The only thing that makes me jealous that I am not teaching anymore is that I would be delighted to have students such as that. Their, their stories were absolutely so mature for the, for their age. They had all of that detail. It's very hard to teach how that has to be done. And to watch them explain what they did. It was just, it was wonderful, really enjoyable. And it's that kind of program. That makes me so proud of the Revere Public Schools and the work that we're doing. And it, it really shows that under these horrible circumstances that we have. Sometimes we learn a very good lessons from them. And this was a great example. I loved the quotations. It's very difficult to write a story with quotations. And to make it make, especially when you're reading it to someone for the first time. And that little girl did a wonderful job doing that. And certainly made me want to go back to Niagara Falls. So congratulations to all.
It's great. I always say that we are blessed to have some of the best teachers in the world right here in Revere. And those are just some of the examples. And, you know, we have to really give credit to the families as well because these kids, these kids do such great work under the tutelage of their parents. So we really. Yeah. Appreciate everybody's contribution. All right, let me just check the agenda again. All right. The next item on the superintendent's report is. Our report from Dr. Garcia. He's going to share with us the work that the Equity Advisory Board newly formed. Under the suggestion of Committee Member D'Ambrosio and the, and the rest of the committee who approved that offering earlier in the summer. And so with that, I will give it over to Dr. Garcia, who's going to let us know what that team's been working on and what they'll be doing in the days to come.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Good evening. I am Dr. Lorenzo Garcia. Good evening, um, I am Dr. Lorenzo Garcia, I'm the Assistant Superintendent of, um, Inclusion and Equity, or Equity, Inclusion and Diversity. Bring all those together. Um, this evening, I'm here, uh, technically to update you on the progress that the advisory, the Equity Advisory Board has done and the plans that we have, uh, moving forward. So, um, the goal for tonight, basically to tell you, is to inform you about the work that has been done. Um, to advance equity, inclusion and diversion in our city. And also in terms of specific objectives, I hope that by, at the time, you know, at the end of this presentation, uh, school committee members will have a solid understanding and be familiar with the work of the Equity Advisory Board. Uh, what we have done so far. And also, uh, you will also have a good understanding of the plan, Plan Equity Audit Process. And, uh, the net, you know, and, uh, the last item that I hope that you will, uh, uh, have a good understanding of would be basically to have some, give us some next steps and some ideas on how to, um, proceed with the plan that we have together, put together. So this has been, um, a very exciting, uh, work because of the committee members and teachers that we have, uh, on board. I also would like to thank, um, Anthony D'Ambrosio for, uh, creating such, uh, you know, proposing and, uh, obviously was approved by the board. Uh, creating such a powerful, uh, tool to really, uh, support the school department, uh, to support our teachers and our administrators. Uh, in terms of, uh, really questioning our practice and, um, in light of the, uh, social, uh, social, political and environment and COVID-19 and the, uh, the, some, you know, issues that are taking place in our country, uh, in terms of, uh, uh, race, uh, and, uh, in, in terms of, you know, uh, I would say, you know, implicit bias and structural racism and other, uh, big things that we are all, uh, been hearing, uh, about lately in our country, in our, in our country that, uh, have been really affecting, um, our, our people and our communities and our schools in general. So, um, it's something, an initiative that really, you know, uh, is important for our school. Um, in terms of, um, um, in terms of, uh, the Equity Audit, I also would like to thank, um, Ms. Rizzo. I, and other school committee members for advocating for it. This is something that has been in the work and we've been talking about this for quite some time. But I think that with a plan that we have, uh, together, put together, that initiative will come, uh, into fruition. Very soon. Um, first, when we talk about the Equity Advisory Board, all the review of the literature I have done so far clearly states that we need something like that in our school. Uh, it's a, it is a necessity, uh, in light of, uh, of what's going on in our country. And the, the purpose of this, we got to, to, uh, the question we got to ask is that, you know, we, do we really need one? What this board really does? And the board technically does is to make sure we raise the social consciousness, um, around the structural, uh, institutional and the system of racism that is basically impacting our children. And the COVID-19 really put a lot of, put another tongue on this issue because of the lack of opportunity, uh, in terms of, not just in terms of lack, lack of access of, you know, to internet or, but that impacts also our families that are home in terms of healthcare, in terms of economics, uh, jobs, you know, uh, and so on and so forth. So those, those, uh, you know, um, you know, institutional barriers that are out there are important for us to know so that we know how to maneuver around and really create opportunities for our families and for our children, uh, in our schools, in our community as well. So how do we do that? You know, administrators and school committee members cannot do that alone. This is a, a tremendous amount of work. It requires really a village to do this work. And, uh, we need to build leadership capacity in our schools. And in doing that, in doing that, obviously we have to involve everyone, teachers, administrators, uh, families, you know, uh, everyone, students. Everyone needs to be part of this, our community partners, everyone needs to be really part of this. Uh, we really, uh, this, you know, boards will make sure that the structures we put together, the initiatives we put together, uh, to dismantle, um, um, you know, inequities in our system are monitored. They are monitored, they are checked, the checks and balances needs to be there. And we, uh, school administrators and, you know, uh, members of the community and the school committee members and teachers, we got to be on the vanguard of this work, really to support it because, you know, uh, unfortunately, unfortunately, I would have to say that time and time again, there's a lot of prejudice in our system. There's no doubt about it and it's clear. It's not just Revere, but it's in our country in general. And to do that work, we really need to start shifting, shifting the tectonic plaques of racism. We have to start dismantling it and we call it out and when we see it in our classrooms, in a conversation in the hallway, um, informally, informal conversation. And when we see things in our community, uh, all that, it needs to be called, you know, we need to call it out. Um, as I said, we, uh, teachers are on the front line, they are the one in the classroom, see what's going on in the classroom, and we need to invest in them. Uh, if it really, uh, if we are serious about this work, we need to really cap, you know, uh, build capacity in terms of teacher leadership. Making sure that they have the know-how, the skills, the knowledge, uh, in terms of, you know, um, how to really work with students, working with parents, making sure how, how to get to involve some, you know, anti-racist pedagogy. Infuse that in the curriculum, in the classroom, so that, you know, every single student benefit, you know, from the resources that we have. Students, when they do enter, any student, when they do enter in our classroom, they are not be judged based on, based on color, race, ethnicity, language and culture. So we got to invest in our teachers. So, um, you know, when the, the equity, um, where the Equity Advisory Board was approved, the first thing we did, Dr. Kelly, uh, met with me and said, we have to move this work forward. And the first thing I did, I reached out to the principals and the principals recommended me, recommended they, um, some enthusiastic teachers to me to be part of this board. If you go over these, we got every single school in the district, well, we have two, um, board members, okay, who are going to champion this work. We are going to really move this work forward with me. And, uh, just look at the list, those are unbelievable teachers. You should see them, um, in meetings, the way they act, the advocacy they put together and, um, you know, they are very knowledgeable about racism and the implication of racism in our, in our society, in our school districts, and how that really impact the pedagogy in the classroom. So they are good teachers, so we have about 22 teachers, 24 give and take, taking, uh, they have been meeting with me, um, you know, uh, I believe that we got to, uh, we will get to a slide where we're going to have the meetings that we already have, that has, uh, meetings that have already been held. And, um, very enthusiastic teachers, they're willing to tackle this work and they're willing to work with the school department to really continue to improve our school system. So what we have been working on, uh, recently, Nellie Mae, the Nellie Mae Education Foundation put a grant out there that, uh, the Nellie Mae Education Foundation, the grant target is basically focused on, uh, COVID-19 anti, and anti-black structural racism. So, uh, the first thing we did, we applied for the grant and, uh, the entire team board, um, has contributed to the narrative that went into the grant. Uh, so we, I got some feedback from all of them. I engaged the Great Schools Partnership in this work already with us. We sought feedback and we put the grant together and we submitted to Nellie Mae. This grant will be huge in terms of helping the school departments, uh, creating structures, uh, creating, you know, delivering professional development or responsive teaching, um, responsive, um, cultural responsive practice, uh, also, uh, in terms of creating structures and preparing teachers in terms of changing their mindset and changing their belief system about, you know, um, uh, black and other minority students. The, we also are, one thing that I, uh, I always like to do, and I'm clear on that, uh, sometimes we put teams together, we don't know the purpose of the team and we don't, we don't know who they, uh, what those teams are supposed to do. Role clarity in this work, in this process is critical. And what we're working right, what we are working right now on is to come up with the roles, responsibility and expectations for the team. What we call Charge of the Equity Advisory Board. We're also trying to, everything we do obviously has to be, um, aligned to the District Improvement Plan. Dr. Kelly, um, and, uh, the other administrators, you know, in the district, we created the, the District Improvement Plan that probably she will present to you. Uh, we sought input for every, from every single, single, you know, stakeholder in the process. And, um, there's a lot of good strategies, goals, action steps in that document and basically targets and focus on, um, anti-racism in our system. And, um, that, we, everything we're doing right now is aligned with that document. And, uh, the last thing that we have been working on is basically, uh, uh, you know, we have been working on, as schools, individual schools have been working on, they have already, some schools have already crafted their own equity action plans. So, um, we are pretty advanced, we're moving this work, there's a lot of enthusiasm in the air. Uh, the teachers that responded, they are very happy about the process, they want to be catalysts of change in this whole process. Uh, this is a draft of the charge of the team. Uh, you can clearly see, uh, it's a draft because we start working on it. Uh, we need the team's approval and we need to, you know, to clear, uh, this plan a little bit more so that it is more concise and it reflects the team's, you know, perspectives and also to make sure that this plan is aligned with the school improvement, with the District Improvement Plan. So this is the purpose of the Equity Advisory Board, you can read it for yourselves, is basically to, is basically to provide leadership and momentum around the implementation of educational opportunities, practicing and practices and programs that will further racial equity in our school and the broader, broader community. So this is the Nellie Mae Grant I was talking about and also, um, uh, some of the things that the Nellie Mae is focusing on and some of the things that came out, emerged from our discussion in the teams. So you can clearly see that the Nellie Mae Grant focuses a lot on anti-black structural racing. For you, for too many of you, probably, many of you already know what Nellie Mae is, it's an organization, has been here with us for a long time. They actually supported a lot of our initiatives that we have in, in, in the district, starting with deeper learning, student-centered learning, flipped learning strategies, um, competence-based learning, uh, you know, you, you can, you name it. So, uh, they have funded us for a long time, I've been doing this work and now we are on the, on the, um, we are in the process of getting, getting another funding from them to support this work. So talking about the, um, uh, Equity Audit, um, we have done our due diligence in terms of, uh, doing some research in terms of, uh, you know, identifying a firm that can, that could come and work with us. And, uh, we, uh, come up, we, you know, search for a, for a sound and, uh, you know, a firm that has a reputation in the field. Uh, we, uh, we identify one firm, it's called Mass Insight. Mass Insight is a firm that is well-known to the Department of Education and also is well-known throughout the country. Uh, they have done a lot of work, um, in, uh, many states, including, uh, you know, Massachusetts. They just completed an audit in Framingham, uh, the district that has a very similar demographics, you know, uh, with Revere. They are a little bit smaller than us, but, um, you know, in terms of demographics, they have the same students with the same characteristics, a lot of ELL, a lot of, um, you know, African-Americans, you know, ELL, special from Brazil, you know, uh, and from other Latin American countries. They've done work in Colorado, I have a list actually of the places where they have worked. They, uh, in Louisiana, Texas, Indiana, Pennsylvania, uh, Missouri, um, you know, and, uh, they are very, very well-known to the Department of Education because they are the only solely source, um, you know, um, a firm that does a lot of work in that with AP and STEM, uh, subjects. So they are, they have a lot of reputation in the field, I consulted them, um, we are, you know, uh, works, uh, we have some, you know, um, uh, activities in the work to really start this work as soon as possible. So the work will start with Phase One, preparation and planning, that will start in December through mid-January. The project will kick off, uh, with meetings and stuff like that. Uh, the Phase Two will start with data collection and analysis, this will involve a lot of data collection. Um, and, uh, with focus groups in the process, interviews, um, you know, surveys and all stakeholders will be involved in the process. I'm talking about students, parents, special education students, uh, ELL students, school committee members, our finance department, principals, assistant principals, uh, parents, community partners, it's basically, um, they will basically, um, not leave any stone unturned, let's put it that way. They will do, that's their job, is to really make sure that they have data that really reflects, uh, what's going on in our district. The goal is basically looking for systems that are working, systems that, that are not working and basically, and then present the data and the findings and the recommendations to us. And then, you know, they will also, um, create, um, you know, um, communication plans for us in different languages in, in terms of how to inform the public parents about this work that's going on. So it's going to be a very engaging and a very interesting process. And hopefully this data and the recommendations we're going to get and the findings will really, you know, pave the way and will, you know, actually support our district and give us some things, some foods, some things, uh, foods for thought and some things to think about and see things that are working, uh, well and be proud of, you know, about, uh, about some of the work that we're doing and see the areas that we need to improve and take it, embrace it, um, um, for, you know, uh, embrace it totally and, uh, you know, uh, and continue to support our systems and, you know, putting mechanisms in place to support our, our school system. So, um, our plans, um, moving forward will be basically to formalize the Equity Advisory Board membership, roles, responsibility, expectations. We need to approve a calendar of meetings, activities for the year and post it. We'll, you know, um, actually, we already have meetings and agendas and those are being posted on the, uh, website. Uh, we will also identify, you know, work with our identified partners, um, Equity Audit Training and Leadership to engage students, families and community, and also we will be working with, um, several other, uh, organizations like Nellie Mae, the Nellie Mae Education Foundation, uh, Great Schools Partnership, they were also, it's another organization, it's well-known to us. They've done tons of work in terms of preparing teachers, building, teach, you know, the leadership capacity in our district, supporting teachers, creating PLGs. They are very well-known to us, have done a very good job in our district and we try to capitalize, capitalize on their expertise to move this work forward. Um, we're also work on the priorities identified in the District Improvement Plan, the Nellie Mae Grant. And, um, you know, we'll develop racial equity plans, those are, will be, that, those will be done by individual, um, schools and, uh, under the guidance, uh, of, uh, our Equity Advisors, uh, in each individual schools with the support of principals, directors, assistant principals and peer colleagues or teachers. These are, um, our partners, uh, just in case, um, you want to go and check, uh, what they have done and the areas they, the areas they, they specialize in, the expertise they have. And, uh, we also, I forgot to mention that we're going to be working also with Harvard and, uh, the Massachusetts Partnerships for Diversity in Education. They do a lot of work in terms of, in terms of diversity and also making sure we prepare our, uh, you know, our, our teaching force with more, uh, diverse, um, teachers that reflect the culture, the experience and, uh, and the, uh, of our popular, of the population we serve. Uh, obviously, you know, our big partners are, to be honest, our big partners are our students, our families, community partners and our faculty members. And obviously, our school committee members. Uh, I just want to leave you with this, uh, powerful quote, uh, from, uh, Dr. King. Um, you can read it for yourself. And I'm ready for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Garcia. Uh, any, uh, members have any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Garcia. Any members have any questions? Mr. D'Ambrosio?
Thanks. Well, first of all, thank you to the entire administration, to you, Dr. Garcia, and to all of the teachers working on this so far. I mean, your work is pivotal and it's going to drive us ahead and it's going to be incredibly appreciated in coming months and years. So I'm sure, you know, I, I can speak for all of us when I say that we very much appreciate it. Going forward, I, I think that it's absolutely kind of crucial that, that we also, as we confirm with, with the staff, the fantastic staff members that you've sort of picked to, to sit on the board. We also sort of begin, and this is to the school committee generally, considering parental and student participation as well. It's going to be crucial as, as we're serving the students primarily here, that, that we have input from them and, and their guardians. So going forward, I would just kind of like to kick that ball off and, and like to ask some school committee members to begin thinking about potential nominations of, of parents in, in the administration, to think about potential nominations of students. But thank you guys all so much again for your awesome work here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. D'Ambrosio. Anyone else? Mrs. Rizzo?
Again, thank you for all the work. I have to say, I'm really happy to see Mass Insight come. It's a long time, but finally here. They have been working with a few other districts in the state. The one thing I have heard from other districts is trying to get more students into the interview and process. Those are the ones that really know the heart of the school. And so when we get to that point, and I know it's hard because especially during this COVID season, to get in touch with other people, you know, everyone's all over the place. So when we do get to the point of interviews, if we could really be proactive on getting the students' voice in there, I'd really appreciate that. But I do thank you for this work. I thank Mass Insight for coming in. And I look forward to everything it can bring to the city of Rivera and our school system.
Thank you, Mrs. Rizzo. Mr. Franti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Garcia, thank you for the report. Two questions. You applied for a grant. When do you think you would hear on the final result and how much was the grant that you applied for?
So the grant is $250,000. So we received encouraging news this past week from the Nellie May Foundation, basically telling us that we're getting it. So we are expecting a memorandum of understanding to come in this week. So, you know, there is a, we are in a very good position to get the grant.
Good. And my other question, just piggybacking a little bit off Anthony's thing. When do you think that we're going to include the students in the parents in your committee? Or if you've already done it, you know, just let us know.
So we are in the process. That's a very good, you know, actually, you know, point that, you know, Anthony and, both Anthony and you are raising. Parents and students and probably some community partners will be part of this process. And what we are considering doing is when we do have meetings, those, those meetings will be online. You know, you know, we will allow people to participate and share. Obviously, there will be meetings that will be for internal, internal discussions. But we will include parents and students in this process. It would not, this process would not be meaningful without those key stakeholders.
Will it be soon? Will they be included soon?
It will be soon.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Franti.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Ty?
Well, Dr. Garcia, you have a long history with Nellie May. You worked with them so well through the years that they were supporting us and in the high school and doing so much for us. So I would expect that maybe you might even have some influence with some people there and that we would be lucky enough to get the grant. And congratulations on getting all of the other organizations involved. I look forward to working with you in any way that I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just want to note very quickly that my appreciation for, for Dr. Garcia's work and contribution on the city side as well. Obviously, racial equity and inclusion and human rights are issues that are not just for a school district, but for a community. And we've been really lucky to, we've been granted an, an award from MAPC to do some racial equity master planning, which I know, Dr. Garcia, you, you know about. You've been helpful in, in putting, you, you've served on, you're serving on the Human Rights Commission. And, and I know that you've just really stepped up to the plate for, for us on the city side as we look to what we can do to, to, to be looking at things through the lens of, of racial equity, inclusion and, and promoting human rights. Dr. Kelly and I came out with a statement in June, talking about our commitment to, to being anti-racist. And what we, what I've had to do is remind people that this is really difficult work that takes a long time. It doesn't just, you know, just snap your fingers and, and, and see these kinds of changes. These are, these are fundamental changes that take a long time. But we're planting those seeds now and, and we've done some really tremendous work around that. And I, I just want to, you know, express my appreciation, Dr. Garcia, for, for the work that you've put in to help us on the city side.
Absolutely. Actually, the work that is taking place at the city, you know, the city side is very similar to what's happening in our school department. And whatever contribution I can bring and if I can learn from people as well, I will do so. So I appreciate the fact that, you know, we're working to, we're working together towards the same goal.
Absolutely. And it's so important for us to be, to, to communicate as we do that, right? Because it isn't, and, and that's in my, you know, charge and I appreciate you being the conduit between the district and the city. I know that, that, that's not easy, but you've, you've stepped up to the plate and I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Dr. Kelly?
Thank you. The next item on the superintendent's report, and I'm going to try to go relatively quickly through these next few because I'm cognizant of the time. But the next one is the district improvement goals.
Wow.
Did we lose her?
Broke up.
We lost her.
Can I make a motion to go on to the student rep report until she gets back in?
Sure.
Sure.
To help Ryan?
Ryan, you want to, want to take the floor?
Yep, just one second. I have, I have to share my screen, so. She has to allow me to share my screen. I have a presentation.
Oh, boy.
She left. She'll be coming back soon, I assume.
Yeah.
Do we want to move on to the consent calendar?
It's fine.
Sure, I'll make a motion to accept the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Second. Roll call the members?
Stacy Bronson Rizzo, yes. Yes.
Dr. Garcia, you're, you're muted. Sorry.
Thank you. Mrs. Stacy Bronson Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Anthony D'Ambrosio?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Ferranti?
Yes.
Ms. Susan Gravellisi?
Absolutely.
Mr. Frederick Sonella?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Brian Rigo?
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to report of subcommittees. Any subcommittees have any reports?
I do.
Mr. Franti?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Now, we had a meeting of the Ways and Means Subcommittee on October 29th. The committee met about the free cash that was accepted. It was certified by the city and accepted by the school department. At the meeting was myself as the chairman, Carol Ty and Anthony D'Ambrosio as my committee members. Also attended was Stacy Rizzo, Susan Gravellisi, Fred Sonella, Mayor Rigo, also Dr. Kelly, Dr. McCobber and Matt Cruz as CFO. At this time, we have a, a letter from Matt Cruz to Dr. Diane Kelly, which I would read, it's, read it, it's rather quick. It says, please request that the school committee vote on the November 17th meeting to approve the appropriation of our free cash carryforward funds of $7,924,549.24 from year 22, fiscal year 21, in accordance with the attached spreadsheet, which starts with the general ledger accounts that will receive fund based on the outcome of the school committee's November 2020 Ways and Means conversation. The Department of Elementary and Secondary requires that we spend the unexpected funds in the subsequent fiscal year in accordance with the Net School Spending Regulations. The reason why we're doing this thing, because we originally had budgeted $7,46,000 in four, forty-six thousand dollars. With the free cash, it brings it up to the number I just read. At this time, there was a motion on the agenda, which I would like to incorporate into this motion also, that at this time, to appropriate $7,924,549.24 of the fiscal year 20, 2020 School Department Carryforward Funds into the fiscal year 2021 School Department Budget in accord with the recommendation of the Ways and Means Subcommittee and the documentation provided by the School Business Manager.
Second.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Mrs. Stacy Bronson Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Anthony D'Ambrosio?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Ferranti?
Yes.
Ms. Susan Gravellis? Mr. Frederick Sonella?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Brian Rigo?
Yes.
So can I just say something here? Diane was kicked out of the meeting. So she said that to move on and then got back to her.
Okay. Any, there's, are there any other subcommittee reports?
None.
Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to all business, which was requesting information from the superintendent on requests made on an equity audit.
And Mr. Mayor, that was supposed to come out, come off the agenda because Dr. Garcia was going to report on it.
Got it. Okay, any, any new business? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to school committee interests.
Mrs. Rizzo? I just wanted to bring up, I don't know if anyone had the opportunity this past weekend to listen to a keynote speaker that we have for MASC. But Dr. Kalith Wernum, she is the Director of Educational Equity in Brookline. Just phenomenal, absolutely. I don't know, there was like 300 people, they had a million questions for her because the work that she does, the information that she shared with us is so valuable. I know she's been doing a lot of work with different districts, I believe Holyoke and Springfield. She's going in to do a, a ton of training. It's been her mission to help others recognize where race and learning intersect and eradicate all forms of racism for our classrooms. And she had talked about, we were talking about microaggressions and stuff. And with that, I figured this was at the end of the evening, I was just going to ask Diane to share a clip, a YouTube clip that we had watched to see what our students are saying in, in high school, just in school period. Because we all have, it's on microaggressions and we all have them. And sometimes it just takes us listening to students to realize we do have them. And so I figured we could end with a clip, but Diane, unfortunately, is not around and we have other things to...
She's back.
Oh, she's back.
Stacy, Kelly's back.
I don't know, I think I had too many windows open, my computer got overwhelmed. But Stacy, I will find that for you at the end of the meeting.
Don't worry, at the end. It, no, not a big deal, there's a ton of other things to cover.
Okay.
I just figured it was a good clip, seeing that we had so much equity discussion tonight and to end on a learning kumbaya moment.
Okay.
So I think we left off with your district improvement goals.
Yes, I'm trying to get those open again. Give me one second. And I do promise to be quick.
Please.
Okay. So I started to talk about that we hadn't changed our mission and vision. That's work we had hoped to do in the spring, but COVID got in the way. However, we were able to have a community meeting before that. And through the community meeting, which was well-attended, we had many parents and students and teachers and others present for that. That was back in February. I believe you were all there. But the strategic objectives that we selected to focus on were building an anti-racist community, promoting social and emotional health and meeting the needs of all students. And so under those three categories, we worked with the priorities that were identified at that meeting and then refined them with our administrative team into the six pieces that you see written here. And I, I won't read through them, but I'll leave them up there on the screen. And this, this document is attached to the committee minutes. For anybody who wants to take a closer look, they'll be on the City of Rivera website along with the packet for this meeting. After that, we took those six priorities and developed them into strategic initiatives that we hope to work on over the next five years. And you'll see them listed here. The, the first digit identifies which of the strategic initiatives we're working on and then the number under that category. And the six that we've identified for particular focus this year are increasing gender and racial diversity of staff, particularly among teachers and administrators, provide training and learning experiences on anti-racism, restore practices and equity for all staff members and students, create, adopt and apply equitable practices across the district, create opportunities for parent engagement and input in school and district decision-making. An example of that was that community meeting. Increase opportunities for students to have voice and choice in their academic programs. And finally, ensure teaching practices across classrooms focus on effective, student-centered, deeper learning experiences. And our outcomes that we will measure ourselves against are listed there. Again, because this is a five-year plan, you'll notice that these outcomes are expected by June of 2025. So for each of these strategic initiatives, we have put together a timeline that includes a set of process benchmarks and also a set of early evidence of change benchmarks so that we can measure our progress as we go. And I'll just pause here so that the committee members and folks watching at home can take a look at what those early evidence of benchmark pieces are. These are the pieces that we're going to, you know, do some checks along the way. And you'll notice for these ones, our due dates are sometime between now and June of next school year, June 2022. One thing that we realized in this goal-setting process is that we really don't have enough is that we really don't have enough time to make effective change. And this speaks to the point that the mayor was making before I lost my connection. Um, the, to say that we're gonna, uh, make a whole lot of goals between now and June of 2021 might be unrealistic. Uh, and so for this first year, we've, we've really made it a kind of an 18-month plan to take us from now until June of 2022. And when the schools use these documents, once you've approved this plan, um, they'll use the District Improvement Plan to shape their own school improvement plans. And those also will be on an 18-month timeline. So here are the pieces for our second. Our third objective. This is for objective 3.2. 5.2. And you can see in these, um, change benchmarks that we are trying to highlight inclusion of voices, like student voice, making sure the kids have a say in the work that they're going to study and the opportunities that they have in school, and also including, um, parent voice throughout. And then the last strategic initiative, or the last one for this year, I should say, 6.4 focuses on our student-centered learning and, and deeper learning initiative, um, which creates equity by, and this is something that, uh, Dr. Garcia referenced in his presentation, uh, ensuring that all kids have access to, um, academic rigor, uh, throughout their educational career. And, you know, hopefully you saw some examples of that in the presentations that the kids did, uh, earlier tonight. So again, I know that was a, a quick review, hopefully the committee had time to read those um, over the last week. And, uh, if not, they are part of the packet for this meeting. And, uh, committee members or, uh, folks at home can access those on the city website.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Kelly. Uh, do any members have any questions or comments? Okay. Uh, seeing none, we'll continue on with the superintendent's report, Dr. Kelly.
Great, thank you. Um. All right, I believe the next item in, in the report, and I lost my, uh, copy of the agenda, that's the HVAC?
That's correct.
All right. So I'm going to, uh, promote Mr. Svenson up to join us. Hi, Carl.
Hello.
Thank you for your patience tonight.
It's been wonderful. Hi, Mom.
Um. I'm gonna, um, go ahead and open the document that we received, uh, which has already been shared with the committee. Um, but I'll share it here just so that we can reference it if need be. Um. Uh, so. All right, just by way of, uh, reviewing past events, um, we had over the summer, uh, taken on the initiative of making sure that our ventilation systems were working well. Uh, and Carl spearheaded that work, uh, through EMRESCO and then, uh, working also with a consultant, um, the Barrett Company, to make sure that we had adequate air exchanges in all of our classrooms. And, um, that research showed that we had some problems at the Beauchamp, the Garfield and the high school, where the ventilation systems were working properly, but because of their age, they weren't, uh, necessarily designed to work in a way that optimized the inflow of outside air, but rather, uh, were designed to optimize heating of space or re- reaching a certain temperature. Um, and so, working with Barrett, Carl came up with a system to try to override those tendencies in, in those HVAC systems. And, um, that worked well. Uh, but their preliminary data showed that we might need to still do some more work. And, um, and again, working with our consultants, they advised us to try seeing what a difference the MERV 13 filters and the HVAC units themselves would do for increasing basically the equivalency, it's cleaning the air, the equivalency of bringing in outside air. Um, and what we found at the Beauchamp and the Garfield was that we had a great effect from that. In the high school, it showed that we still had a need for some more support in purifying the air. Carl, do you want to add to that? Did I misstate anything? Please correct me if I did.
No, that was perfect. Uh, like, like you said, it's basically the supplement for the outdoor air. The filters, um, make up for that, you know, that deficiency. And you're, you're able to add that, um, component to it, which actually brings our numbers up. So, yeah, you said it perfectly.
Okay, so I'm going to share my screen now. And I'm going to start with the Beauchamp School. And this is a gnarly-looking, um, spreadsheet. Uh, you all did a, get a copy of it, but I'm going to try to just, uh, take you through, uh, what the meaning is. Um, and at the top here, you can see in the titles, this is the Beauchamp School, different room numbers, the air was supplied by a local UV, stands for Univent, uh, or unit ventilator. Um, and in order to measure the air exchanges, uh, we really have to look at the size of the room. So Carl and his team, um, actually measured all of these rooms and got an actual square footage and then built a volume off the height, using his math skills that he learned in the Revere Public Schools.
I went to Sabio.
Well, didn't you go to elementary? No?
Oh, I did, that's.
Yes, of course you did.
So I hope you learned about area and volume in your elementary days in Revere.
I certainly did.
Okay, um, and from that, they get a, a, a measured outside airflow rate in CFMs, that's how they're measured. Um, and then the measured Univent flow rate. And that gives, uh, that, and also the circulated airflow rate. Um, circulated air is the air from inside the room that is pulled back into the univentilator and mixed with outside air, um, to come back in and be, uh, recirculated after it's been cleaned. Um, so using that together with a MERV 13 filter, it gives you the, um, clean recirculated airflow rate with the MERV 13. That is combined with the outside airflow rate to give you the total CFMs, um, in that room. And that is then, um, converted using a formula from the Harvard TH Chan School to give the effective air changes per hour for that room. And the number that we're looking for in this column, this is really the key number, because this is telling you basically how many times the air is cleaned or outside air is brought in to replace the existing air in that room based on the, um, the mechanics that are involved here. And the number that we are looking for, for a good, effective air rate change is at least four. Six is considered excellent. And anything over six is, is just extra. This is, you know, when we're talking about COVID, the specialists tell us all the time, the best thing you can do is stay outside. Because when you're outside, you have constant air change, constant airflow. And so this is measuring how many times in each of these rooms the air is completely turned over into fresh or cleaned air, uh, that's either coming entirely from the outside or through those MERV 13 filters. And so you can see, as I go down this column at the Beauchamp School, we're in really, really good shape, uh, once the MERV 13 filters are installed. And if I switch over to the Garfield School, uh, again, we have the school, we have the rooms and those same metrics that I just talked about. And I'll, I'll, you know, cut right to the chase over here. When we look at the effective air changes per hour, they're above really where we need them to be. But it's, it's really great shape. And this is the solution, um, that's going to enable us. And you'll remember at the beginning of the year, in order to increase outside, increase the clean outside air, we were making sure our windows worked well and that they could be kept open, uh, which is the same way that you, uh, improve the airflow in your own home. And you can see these numbers are really great. So we're very satisfied, uh, with where we're going to be at the Garfield and the Beauchamp once the MERV 13 filters are installed. And, um, they have been ordered, um, Carl, I believe they are on back order and we're expecting them toward the end of January, is that right?
Correct, yes.
The high school, um, is where you'll see a little bit of different data. And again, this, these are the classrooms at the high school, um, it goes through the rooms. And again, I want to emphasize that the high school, um, the rooms that are in the core, the A rooms, the B rooms, the C rooms are fine. Uh, testing there showed that because they're on a separate system, um, the air exchanges in those rooms, uh, already met the standard. The areas that we were concerned with were in the more traditional classrooms on the 100 wing, the 200 wing and the 300 wing. Um, because those are the rooms where each room has its own unit ventilator. And, um, that's where we find a capacity issue. So, um, when we do the work there, including with the MERV 13 filters, you'll see now, um, the calculated effective air change is not over the four number. And these are not horrible numbers, they're decent, but they're not as good as we would want them to be. Um, and so that, that is why, um, we have worked with, uh, Al Baker and through the mayor's office, um, through a grant program that she has, uh, to obtain standalone HEPA filters for each classroom at the high school. And each of those standalone filters will add two effective air changes per hour to this number. And, and, you know, just looking at these, it'll take us from the 3.4, that isn't quite as high as we want, to a 5.4, which will put us over that threshold. And, uh, that continues down, this number would become a 5.7, a 4.5, a 5.5, et cetera, on down. And so I think that's about where we are with HVAC. Carl, you want to add anything now?
No, just, um, that you always seem to amaze me with how you seem to adapt to these, whether it's a roof or a boiler, uh, HVAC, that you pick it up a lot quicker than people in the field. So everything you said was perfect. Um, but the only thing I'd say is that it's more than a HEPA filter, it's an air purifier. It's an electric fan-driven, uh, air purifier for these high school rooms. Not, not a filter that's going into the unit.
Right, that's right.
It's a standalone, uh, air purifier.
Do any members have any questions? Mrs. Rizzo.
I, I just want to say, Carl, thank you so much. Um, the work that you and your crew have been doing, um, the timeless, I mean, all the times that you have to repeat all this to every, um, committee that there is in the city to make sure they know all, um, safety precautions are being taken. Um, the patience that you have. Um, and I know this is uncomfortable for you to, you know, have to be in these type of meetings. Um, but I just want to say thank you. It, it truly, the work you do is truly, truly appreciated.
Well, thank you very much, but I gotta tip my hat to my team. Um, without them, I, I'd be lost. So it's a, it's a group effort. And, um, like I said, what you're thanking me is thanking all of them because they, they work so hard and I appreciate you doing that, thank you.
Mr. Franti.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Carl, a couple of questions. Obviously, we have to thank you and your team for what you've done just to get to this point. Is there ever going to be a point that the windows will be shut?
I don't see why not. The reason for the opening of the windows was because we only had speculation of the numbers. We didn't have real numbers. And what we were told was, we need to see these numbers. And these numbers don't exist without, you know, bringing someone up on an airlift and putting a measuring device on the outside 40, 50 feet on, on these buildings and taking an actual reading. So, you know, in, in, you know, fantasy everybody, we don't have that numbers until we, those numbers, until we go and get them. So our goal was, how do we bring in a sufficient amount of outdoor air? And the solution was to open a window. Uh, at this point, um, these numbers show us that we're bringing in that sufficient amount of outdoor air. So with that, you know, me without being a scientist can say, you can close those windows and have the adequate air in your space that is required and recommended.
And my last question is probably kind of a dumb one, but are the windows open at night in the rooms?
Uh, we recommend closing them every night. Um, certain windows are grade level, which could provide some access issues if somebody wanted to kind of force it open or crawl into it. And in the lower temperatures, as if tonight and tomorrow is going to get down, we would, we would face a, a possible freezing issue of pipes and systems if we were to leave them open. So we have everyone double, triple check that they're closed every night. And, uh, we got a little system in place for that. And, um, so to answer your question, they're closed and locked every night.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sinella.
Yes, uh, through you to Carl, I, I, I think that the, uh, explanation that Diane to put the mechanics into words should be assuring to the, uh, parents because, um, we've heard all kinds of stories, not just in Revere, but elsewhere, old buildings, antiquated buildings, um, the air quality X, Y and Z. Uh, Diane, has the, is this the, um, listing that you have given to the teachers' union?
It is, we shared, um, this document, we just got it yesterday and shared it with, um, all of the unions, um, uh, later yesterday, I can't remember what time.
Well, I, I hope it puts to rest once and for all, um, um, the issue of adequate air and, and probably quality control better than most, uh, other buildings. And that, uh, with Carl made reference that the possibility of, uh, shutting windows and getting the same quality air exchange will alleviate anyone having snow on them or something of the nature where, um, I mean, people will find fault no matter what's done. But I think that the, um, Carl's crew and, and your leadership has shown, at least to the general public, we're not sitting idly by and that when we start allowing children back into the schools, that they're going to be safe and that everything humanly possible has been done and then some. So thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sinella, any other members?
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Ty.
Just, I think, let me just, um, buttress what Mr. Sinella just said. Uh, his last word was leadership. And I know how everybody works so hard under you, Carl, but that's because you are an excellent leader. And I know that you went to school in Revere and learned all your math skills when you were young. Thank you very much for using them to help us.
Thank, thank you, thank you, Carl.
I have to say, and I know you've all said it already, but it bears repeating, that Carl and his team have been working around the clock, first to, to get the windows operational, uh, and then, you know, to make sure these systems were optimized as well. So we're very lucky to have them all on our, on our team.
Amen.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you, Carl. Okay. Thank you, Carl. Great job.
Thanks, Carl.
You're welcome.
I can, you can leave, or I can put you back in the...
Yep. No, I gotta go pick up my son, so.
All right, thanks.
Goodbye, everyone. Thank you for the kind words.
Okay. And, Mr. Mayor, can you remind me, was there one more thing on the superintendent's report?
There's one more thing, the Safe Roots to School at Beachmont.
Oh, right, yes, yeah. I'm gonna try to find that. So the last thing that I did want to mention is that we were fortunate through the mayor's office, and Julie DiMauro in particular, to have a new Safe Roots to School program for the Beachmont School. And, you know, Julie's been working on this for, for a number of years. She helped us with the Safe Roots to School program at the Garfield School. And we're just really excited to have this next project kicking off. And Carl, again, with a team from the city, is going to be working on taking, doing a walking route around the Beachmont to identify specifics of the plan. But the ultimate goal is to make sure that our students are safe as they walk to and from school. And so they'll be working with Dr. Napier and Dr. Mulligan down at Beachmont and Seacoast to make sure that we have a good plan in place for all kids. And the seven intersections that are going to be part of the project, hopefully, they still have to do final scoping. But they're hoping to really address the intersections and the corners at Bennington and Everard, Bennington and Crescent, Crescent at Winthrop Ave and Cummings Park, Winthrop at Donnelly Square, State at Atlantic Ave, Atlantic at Endicott and Cottage Street. So those are going to be the focal spaces for that Safe Roots to School campaign. And we look really, we really look forward to working with Julie and the mayor's office and our own teams to make that come to fruition. So just wanted to mention that to everybody.
Much appreciated, Dr. Kelly.
Well, one thing to note, Dr. Kelly, is that, and for any Beachmont residents that may, maybe watching, they may remember that as part of the project at Suffolk Downs, the redevelopment at Suffolk Downs, that Donnelly Square would be, there'd be some changes that happen there. And I want people to know that we are coordinating so that whatever happens will be kind of in line with what, what was projected to happen based on some of the improvements that we want to see associated Donnelly Square. So I'm excited about the project. I know that, that the, the Safe Roots to School project down Garfield, on Garfield Ave and around the Garfield School made a substantial difference and a substantial improvement in the walkability around, around the neighborhood and around the school. So I'm sure the same will happen down Beachmont.
All right.
Chairman, quick question?
Mr. Franti?
Yeah. Do we have an idea when we would hear if we get the grant or not?
So we've received the grant. We got, we got, we got feedback that we will be receiving it. There's just some additional planning that will need to happen. But we got the, we got the thumbs up that we, we will be receiving this grant.
And when do you think that we'll start the project? Is we that far ahead yet?
I, I'm actually looking at an email right now. You know, we've got to get back to, back to the state by the end of this month. And it looks like we need to have some, some work done, by work, I mean, some paperwork done by the end of, the end of this year. And I would guess that the actual work being done will be next construction season.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I could mention one more thing, and this was not on the agenda, but I just wanted to highlight for the school committee and the parents at home that we know that there's talk about athletics starting again, and we're expecting actually a notification from the GBL, the Greater Boston League, to come out maybe at the end of this week. We've worked with our neighboring communities in the GBL, Everett, Walden, Medford, Revere, Somerville, and Lynn, and Chelsea, around how to proceed. Because one of the challenges of the GBL that may not be faced by some of the other leagues in the Commonwealth is that we have a mix of districts, some of whom are red and remote and not able to participate in athletics, and others who are yellow and in school and able to participate in athletics. And I know the athletic directors from all of those communities are going to meet later this week. And our goal is going to be to try to let those kids who can play sports, because it's permissible in their communities, to go ahead and proceed with some kind of athletic programming. And they're going to try to preserve the kind of game status or tournament kind of status for the delayed fall season that the MIAA already approved. So, you know, we're still optimistic that maybe after the new year, the city of Revere will find itself in a different place in terms of COVID. And we can start thinking about coming back to school in late January or early February, first with our special needs kids, but then moving to more of a full hybrid model and that our athletics would follow suit in that program. Time is going to tell. And I think that the response to COVID that we have in this community after the Thanksgiving break will be really important data for us. But my office is working on using the plans that we came up with this summer to really think about what is the feasibility and what are the pieces we need to put into place to start thinking more seriously about a return to in-person learning and with that, a return to student athletics. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, both to the committee and to the folks at home, that we are still working on this and still thinking about this and, and recognizing that the best thing for kids is to have in-person learning, but only when it's safe for them to be here and able to do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Kelly.
And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ryan.
Can everyone hear me? Okay, so I first off just want to say, on behalf of the students, that we greatly appreciate the work that Dr. Garcia and his team have done on pushing the anti-racist values that I know a lot of students within the school want to see. And when they hear about this news, they'll be very happy. This is something that was very needed and coming at a great time where lots of students are becoming outspoken and advocating for this issue. So this is definitely a step in the right direction. I also want to say that, also on behalf of the students, kind of just complimenting the remarks that Dr. Kelly just made. It is very crucial for students to get back and these athletic programs back into the school. And time will tell, but I would just stress staying optimistic about it. I hope that's the general consensus among everybody on this board, just staying optimistic, not pushing it out of capabilities of kind of coming across for coming back to school and in-person learning. So keep it brief, because I know we're running late. For my student report, not many of the classes, as far as besides the senior class, have much going on. They're still in the process of kind of developing their members, who their officers are going to be kind of like figuring out the plans and how they want to fundraise. However, for the senior class, they've taken on a very fast-track approach. Despite the COVID situation, we are in the works of a senior sweatshirt fundraiser, which is very important to just bring that senior year culture together. We have a Chipotle fundraiser on November 21st, which is a great way we're going to be raising money for all the various senior activities and gifts that we have. We're planning other fundraisers, such as the Anunos fundraiser in December. And we are in the works of the yearbooks, which the process has also been fast-tracked. We're not slowing that process. So it's been a great collaboration amongst a lot of the people in these clubs, kind of bringing together all these ideas, all these strategies to kind of make the most of the situation that we're in right now and kind of bring that normality of fundraising, these school events, these school opportunities for the senior class. One positive thing that I personally believe is one of the greatest things to come out of the situation is that students are really applying to college this year round. And it is a credit to the time that they have and as well as many teachers, specifically Ms. Curry, the guidance counselor group, really just getting out there, reaching out to students, giving them more opportunities and more guidance when applying to colleges. So far, 21% of all seniors have applied to college early. So this isn't included. This is all early action. So it really shows students taking that fast-track approach to getting into college, which is something that, as a student, I look very favorably upon. It's good to know that a lot of other kids in my class are applying to college. It's a great sign for kind of the success that RHS will have in the future and kind of the track that we want to be as a school. 98 students submitted over 416 applications. So that is a lot of applications. On average, students were applying to more than one school, which is a great sign. It shows that students are really getting out there, doing all these applications, putting in the hard work, and a lot of them are going to be accepted. Students were applying to over 104 different universities. So it just shows that teachers like Ms. Curry and Guidance Counselors, they're really pushing students all these great opportunities, all these different universities all across the country, showing that no school is too big or too small. I saw a database of all the colleges that students have applied to. There's many accredited universities, and it really is a great sign. And it's a credit to the school's education system, just pushing kids into these great universities, these great majors. And hopefully, one day, those students will be able to give back to those schools with all the knowledge they obtained at these universities. And just to mention once again, the, the Ms. Curry and her Opportunities Classroom page, this is a Google Classroom, which has really just reached out to students and it's given them opportunities such as job internships, college visits, all these sorts of things that students might just not get in the in-person learning situation. So pages like this are really reaching out to students and making their opportunities aware to them. I believe this is definitely a step in the right direction. It's also personally helped me in my college application process. And I can speak for many students saying that this hands-on approach, I believe, will definitely create a lot of success stories to many students. So this is definitely a step in the right direction for this school district, just pushing kids into college. And there's also a lot of students who are getting pushed into trade schools. So whether or not you take the college route or you take the trade route, we have students who are going to be going to these accredited universities, are going to be going straight into the workforce right out of high school. And with all this bad stuff going on right now, this is something we can look forward to. And once the regular decision applications are due, we can probably expect a lot more seniors to apply to college. And this is definitely a step in the right direction. So just to wrap it up, obviously, we'd all love to be back in school right now, in-person learning. As an athlete, I want to be back on the football field. But time will tell, and in the meantime, students are making do and they're taking advantage of these later-in-life opportunities. So it's not all that bad. So, yeah, and it's just, it is a credit to the administration just really pushing out, whether it's like getting fundraising for new opportunities or just pushing like college universities in these students' mindsets. So it really is a step in the current situation. And I guarantee this will continue onward. Not all, uh, thank you.
Very nicely said.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Ryan. Any, anyone have any questions or comments? Mrs. Rizzo?
I, I just want to say, welcome to Ryan. Unfortunately, I was not at the last meeting, so I missed your debut. But it has truly been a pleasure watching you from a cute little boy, growing up to this wonderful, wonderful young man. And so glad that we have the honor of you being a student rep this year and look forward to working with you.
Thank you. I greatly appreciate that.
And Brian, Ryan?
Ms. Ty?
Mr. Mayor? Please keep us informed of the various fundraising activities because even if we cannot participate in one, we can contribute. And I know that we have always been happy to help the senior class in any way at all that we could, and will continue to do so. Or perhaps more so, now that you are somewhat limited in what you can do. So don't hesitate at all to send us an email and to ask us for something. Thank you. And I look forward to your yearbook again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ty. Any other committee members? Okay. Thank you, Ryan. We'll move on to motions.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Ty?
Maybe, this is a little bit under old business and a little bit under the report of, of the Subcommittee on Negotiations. But first, I'll make the motion. The motion is that we approve the first return to work memorandum of agreement with the revered Teachers Association dated September 2020.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Sannella, second. Roll call the members?
Just before we do, I'd like to give an explanation, please, about why we are doing it now. We have actually already voted on this in a, in a committee of the whole meeting. But, and the teachers had approved it before we did, quite some time ago. But just so that it is in the, it is in a public meeting here that we approve of this one and the subsequent one. So, Mr. Mayor, if you want to take the roll call.
Sure. We'll take a roll call of the members.
Mr. Stacy Bronson Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Anthony DiAmbrosio?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Ferranti?
Yes.
Ms. Susan Gravelis? Mr. Frederick Sannella?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Brian Arigo?
Yes.
And the next motion, Mr. Mayor, is that we approve the second return-to-work memorandum of agreement with the revered Teachers Association dated October 2020. So move.
Second.
Roll call the members.
Mr. Stacy Bronson Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Anthony DiAmbrosio?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Ferranti?
Yes.
Ms. Susan Gravelise? Mr. Frederick Sannella?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Brian Arigo?
The next item on the agenda is a motion to allow the distribution of surplus student chairs with the service project guests that are, that Seacoast students have made.
So move, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Stacy Bronson Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Anthony DiAmbrosio?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Ferranti?
Yes.
Ms. Susan Gravelis? Mr. Frederick Sannella?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Brian Arigo?
Yes. The next item on the agenda is for the school committee to accept the district improvement goals.
So move.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Stacy Bronson Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Anthony DiAmbrosio?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Ferranti?
Yes.
Ms. Susan Gravelis? Mr. Frederick Sannella?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Brian Arigo?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is a motion by Mrs. Rizzo. Mrs. Rizzo, do you want to read your motion?
Sure. This is to make a motion that the evaluation cycle for the current superintendent, Dr. Kelly, be held on a two-year cycle rather than the current one year. Although this change is allowed for experienced superintendents, it is also strong- it is also strongly recommended to keep addressing the annual goals. So moved.
Second.
Uh, roll call.
Uh, I, I just want explanation. Um, so, you know, there's so much going on right now. Um, the timing, we need to consider, um, so working with the superintendent just to adjust the timeline for the evaluation. Um, as far as the goals, um, she's been working on the goals during the entire school year, and the focus of everyone's work certainly has changed in mid-March, but given this reality, we as a committee, um, could choose to evaluate goals a little bit differently. And as far as standards, um, superintendents have been working on, did I just read that? Oh, my gosh. I did just read that. We need to keep in mind that the vision and the mission of the district does not change, and we need to focus on what's important in the short term. And these recommendations have been made from DESI, MASC, and MASF for all three-plus years, um, in the role of a district superintendent, and at the discretion of the school committees, and also, um, keeping in mind annual goals, benchmarks, um, are still recommended. Roll call.
Mr. Stacy Bronson.
Okay. Any other members are... Okay. We'll have a roll call.
I, I think it's a great idea.
Thank you, Ms. Ty.
Mr. Stacy Bronson Rizzo.
Yes.
Mr. Anthony Di Ambrosio.
Yes.
Mr. Michael Ferranti.
Yes.
Ms. Susan Gravelise. Mr. Frederick Sannella.
Yes.
Ms. Carol Ty.
Yes.
Mayor Brian Arigo.
Yes.
And the last item on the agenda is a motion, uh, made by Mrs. Rizzo.
Um, so this motion would be to request the Revere School Committee to submit the following resolution on high-stakes testing to our legislation. Um, whereas the Revere School Committee have previously and repeatedly discussed the pros and cons of high-stakes testing, including the MCAS, whereas the COVID-19 remote learning model has negatively and disproportionately affected students with learning disabilities, students of lower socioeconomic status, ELL students, and students who identify as minorities, whereas the social and emotional trauma, both individually and collectively, has yet to be truly realized, and the students who have experienced the shutdown of our school buildings and separations from their peers and supportive adults, whereas the students of the Revere Public Schools have already missed valuable face-to-face instructional opportunities with their teachers and would benefit from focusing on those important instructional opportunities and social-emotional support. Therefore, be it resolved that the Revere School Committee rejects the calls of the students of 2022 who missed their 10th grade MCAS testing to be required to make it up during the 2020-2021 school year or ever. We demand those students be held harmless for not taking the MCAS and that their graduation requirements shall be determined by locally-controlled voices of the school committees and school administrations within the remaining graduation requirements of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Additionally, we reiterate our, our call for a moratorium on all high-stakes testing for the 2020-2021 school year, so all students can benefit from their time being focused on direct instruction, and we urge the legislature to enact a moratorium on high-stakes testing for three years. So moved.
Second.
Uh, and any members have any comments?
Yes.
Ms. Ty? Yep, Ms. Ty.
Um, you know, I believe that the Revere Public Schools has been, um, the recipient of many, uh, uh, the advantages, uh, and that go along with MCAS testing. We have moved tremendously from way back in the early 90s when ed reform came and required this, and our kids have moved up consistently and have set standards for the kids who follow them. Uh, and our teachers have stepped up, our administration, and, and I am very much in favor of high-stakes testing. The, not necessarily in favor of the way that the MCAS test is written. I do believe it's time for a second look. But at any rate, under these circumstances, there can be no time for a second look at any of it. We cannot, um, put more stress on our teachers and our children and force them when they have been deprived of many of the wonderful aspects of their education, and in some aspects, parts of their education, that, that we just cannot, um, expect them to, uh, show a kind of progress in that kind of test. I don't say they haven't made progress, but in that specific kind of test. Um, so that I believe that this is an excellent motion, and, uh, join in, uh, Mrs. Rizzo, uh, presenting it to us for the three-year moratorium.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ty. Any other members? Uh, we'll take a roll call.
Mr. Stacy Bronson Rizzo.
Yes.
Mr. Anthony Di Ambrosio.
Yes.
Mr. Michael Ferranti.
Yes.
Ms. Susan Gravelise. Mr. Frederick Sannella.
Yes.
Ms. Carol Ty.
Yes.
Mayor Brian Arigo.
Yes.
Uh, any other members have anything else before we adjourn?
Um, yes, there is one, there is one motion that, um, Susan had brought up at the Committee of the Whole. I can't... I forget where I put it. I'm sorry. In her absence, I... Diane, do you have a copy?
What is it?
It's a letter.
The Mass, Mass Call.
The Mass Call 3, MOU.
Mass Call 3.
The Memorandum of Understanding.
Right.
From Mass Call.
A motion to accept the Mass Call, um, Memorandum of Understanding.
Second.
Uh, roll call the members.
Mr. Stacy Bronson Rizzo.
Yes.
Ms. Anthony Di Ambrosio.
Yes.
Mr. Michael Ferranti.
Yes.
Ms. Susan Gravelise. Mr. Frederick Sannella.
Yes.
Ms. Carol Ty.
Yes.
Mayor Brian Arigo.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I know there was a video that we were gonna end off with.
Uh, and you know what? I, I know the time, so I can understand.
I can, I can try to bring it up quickly if you give me one minute.
And just for the, uh, for the edification of the viewing audience, uh, then, uh, as we adjourn, uh, after this, uh, this video, uh, our next meeting will be December 15th, uh, at 6:00 PM.
I'm almost there. All right.
Diane, that's all right.
Oh, is it not playing?
The audio is not playing, Dr. Kelly.
Don't worry about it.
No, I think it's really good. Give me one second. Why does it keep doing this?
We'll have to make it one of your goals to learn how to do this better.
You have to re-click the same button every time. Hold on. I gotcha.
You've been a star.
Now you know what, um, the teachers deal with every day.
Yeah.
That's why I better edit it, I am, though. Let me just start this over. Yeah. I was enjoying it so much, Stacy, I didn't realize it wasn't playing.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Oh, you're so pretty for a black girl.
Oh, she has a Jew nose.
Oh, your hair would look so good if it was straight.
Jews are so cheap. Why are you so cheap?
Do you speak, um, good English?
How are you an Iraqi Jew?
I think the person saying microaggression kind of doesn't really think about it.
This person decided it was my friend, and like, I was astonished they would like say something like that.
You don't want to make a big deal about it, but then it's also like, you just said something that offended me, so I feel like I should speak up.
Because they're micro, because they're, um, very subtle, they, they're small, you feel like you don't have a reason to be upset. You're overreacting, and people even can make you feel that way when you bring it up.
They're like, oh, you can't take a joke. You're making too big of a deal of this. Why are you overreacting?
Don't take it so seriously. It was just a joke. Chill out.
Say like, oh, no, I actually love black people. I love people of color. Like, they try to just minimize the situation. If someone feels hurt by a microaggression, it shouldn't just be pushed to the side.
It definitely has negative impacts and like leads to people disliking who they actually are. Those kinds of subtle offensive comments can build up over time, and they can have like a deep psychological effect, and, you know, they can make you feel bad and they can make you doubt yourself.
We try to just use jokes to like make things less awkward or like ease social experiences, but it is important because you need to like be aware of what you're saying and like who you're speaking to. Think of what you say and how it can affect the person you're saying it to.
Thank you. And like I said before, I know I have, um, have many microaggressions that I'm just learning at this old age how to correct, and it takes, uh, young, um, adults and students to teach some of us older dogs new tricks. So, um, I plan to learn a lot, um, with the new advisory committee, with our school committee, and, um, with other equity committees that I've been working with. So, thank you for playing that.
Thank you for, thank you for sharing it, Mr. Rizzo.
Mm-hmm.
All right, with that, uh, we will, uh, adjourn until December 15th. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night, all.